Mrs. Vok, would you call the role for our meeting?
Mr. Howell.
President.
Mr. Winger.
Here.
Mrs. Turner.
Here.
Mr. Old.
Here.
Mayor Kramer.
Here. Before we get into the items of discussion, is there any members of the public that would like to come and make a comment before the City Council? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on with the items for discussion. 3A, procedures for evaluating charter officers. We don't really have any names on these, but I would be willing to take volunteers who want to introduce this.
Yeah, I'd be glad to. The City Council has three people that report directly to it: the city manager, the clerk, the city clerk, and the city attorney. And I think we ought to have a process by which they're evaluated every year and that it's sort of stuck in stone. There's a process of evaluating them, setting up some goals, knowing their job description, setting up some goals, and then evaluating them at the end of the year. And that's what, I think that's the duty of our commission, of our council. And I think it's helpful to them so that they know how they're doing versus what they're supposed to be doing in their job. So I think it's a process that we ought to go through. I don't think we went through it last year, my memory is that we didn't, and I just think that it's a reasonable thing to go through. What I'd like to do is circulate to everybody a job description of each and some of the process that was used in the past where there were goals set and then there were evaluations for each one, an evaluation sheet for each one, and a process that was used in the past, and see if we all agree to it, or see if we each have some other ideas about what the goals might be, what the job description might be, or what the process might be. But I think it's important that we discuss it and we agree on a process of doing this. I'd love your comments on it.
Senator, this is something we have done in the past. We have asked charter officers to present goals as well as a final report against those goals. We have had job descriptions approved. As far as evaluations, we've had mixed response from council, whether they would fill out the evaluations or not. But I concur with you that I think it's important to give that feedback to our charter officers.
Yeah. Any else? What was the process we used before? Was there a particular date that was used or anything like that?
We used to have it around the budget time in July.
July? And that's the time that they're evaluated? Everybody's evaluated?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Okay, well, why don't I take it upon myself to work with Tammy and come up with what we've got now in the way of job descriptions, the last kind of evaluation process that was used and the goals and things that were used in the past, and then circulate it and see if there's some changes or some suggestions or comments on that process? And maybe at the next meeting we'll see if we can agree on the way to do that. Is that all right?
Sounds good.
Okay. Maybe, Pilar, if you've got a system that you thought worked well in the past, you could help me with that.
I'm sure Ms. Vok has the records.
Oh, okay.
Glad to, yeah, make sure that when those documents come out, if there's anything else that I have that might be helpful for you.
Is July a reasonable time to be doing this? I mean, to appraising it this year? Does that seem like the right time?
Randy, I'd suggest that maybe we do it earlier than July. We get into the whole budget thing, and I think that's the reason that many times it's been delayed, deferred, neglected because of the pressure on the budget. And I would like to see that moved up if pleases the council.
I concur. So in June, we'll try to do something like that?
That would, I think, would be a great idea.
Well, let's see if we can agree on the process and the goals and things by the next meeting. I'll bring it forward, I'll circulate it and bring it forward, and we'll discuss it then, okay?
Randy, is there, there were goals established, I've forgotten how long ago.
2010.
No, no, 2014, I think. Although I had them.
I have a copy of some city manager's goals and objectives, July 14. I can circulate those.
Yes, I think it would be useful. I mean, the reality of it is we, they're a useful starting point.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, Tammy and I will work together on putting something out and around.
Great. So you're going to bring that back as an agenda item?
I will, yes.
Okay. Good. Item 3B, goals for 2016. Anybody want to go first on this?
Mayor, I have an item. I'm going to be putting it on the next week agenda. You know, with considerable feedback from the leaders of the community, we are accused of unintentional exclusion. That's actually a quote from somebody I wish I knew who. But the idea being that the combination of our television station, which is limited to one, our webpage, which has documents on it, there's no recording of votes. Very often, major issues are missed in the press, which could be helped if there was some way of pulling those forward and telling them what they are. There's no votes tabulated in the press such as there is for the House of Representatives. There is at least one publication that I question the veracity of their news without naming any names. And there's a groundswell in the community that essentially we're unintentionally excluding. I'll give you an example. There's an establishment, a friend of mine was in on Old Dixie, and there were several people in there vaping cigarettes, and the proprietor was told it was against the law in Vero Beach, and he shut it down. But, you know, it doesn't do any good to have laws. It doesn't do any good to work on the step system. It doesn't do any good to have a proactive police force or lifeguards. It doesn't do any good to fix the fountain at Royal Palm Point. It doesn't do any good to work on upgrading Leisure Square, and on and on. The public simply doesn't know it. And I would tell you that I believe City Council has done a reasonable workmanship-like job financially and infrastructure and organization and so on in the last period of time. I would tell you that I think the apathy comes from the fact that, in effect, we're not talking, we're not telling people what has been decided, what the issues are, what are the concerns, and so on. Occasionally, we'll get something forward, something that comes forward like the Riverfront property, or the postal annex, or we'll get something that comes forward like the diesel plant. And it does make the press. But most of the time, the issues don't. I'll give you an example. Dodger Town Golf Course. You know, we're in the process of doing something with it. And what I said to these community leaders, and there were a great many of them there, in fact, almost every organization, is that, you know, the power of five really needs to be checked democratically. In other words, we could have decided to do something with the postal annex, and we are deciding, and will decide to do something with the diesel plant and Dodger Town. And I do not think that that information is getting to the public the way it should. You know, we've chosen as a form of government, we have a city manager, a form of government, and the mayor is not the executive officer, he's the head of the council. But we've also chosen over the years to have a commission form of government, very different from the county. And we involve our commissions, and we put things back to them recently with the mural thing. We waited a couple of weeks. You know, we waited a couple of weeks on the skateboard thing. But we want our public involved, but we're not giving them a chance to be involved because they simply have a hard time knowing what the issues are. So when you talk about goals for 2016, it's something we simply must address. It's something that the public is concerned with, the leaders. The other one, of course, is our meetings are too raucous, and I think the mayor has put forward, or will put forward, a solution to that, and I think that's a good idea. So that's my little soli, if you like.
Just a question. I guess it sounds like you are trying to promote more public input, and yet at the same time you're voting to exclude public input at the beginning of the meetings, which I know will deter public comment. So I'm a bit perplexed in your comment. Could you clarify, please?
Well, after listening, I say, to a great many people, people that you know and respect, and I do too, they feel that one way or another we've got to get the 28-minute comments that have little to do with the city at the front of the meeting out of the way. And if the best way we can figure to do that, and I tried, as mayor for two years, to limit them to the three minutes, which is in the charter, if the best way we can do that is put them to the end of the meeting, then so be it. But what we are doing is we're preventing people with real business from coming forward with this dialogue by a few people. So if you can find a better solution than putting an end in the meeting, I will tell you that most other governments around us, including the county, have it where I believe the mayor, I don't know where he's proposing to put it, is putting it. But we simply cannot have a round robin of inappropriate and lengthy comments at the start. If you're willing to, I've risen to a point of order several times when they got too long or they strayed from what's on the record, but it's got to be fixed. It simply has to be fixed.
I actually think what you're talking about is factually what's been going on or what's going on in the city, to get that factual information out, where we had a vote on this and the vote went this way, where the City Council talked about this issue and that issue, kind of a synopsis of what went on, or business of the community that's readily available to people, that they can check someplace that's easy to get to and that they can see the news of the city somewhere. We're not stifling, the idea is not to stifle it, I don't think that's your point. It's to make the news available, and I think they're sort of separate issues.
I will say that vote tabulation, I mean, the minutes of the, if you go to our website, I mean, you can watch the video of the meetings. There's minutes of the meetings and clearly gives the votes on every single issue. I think there's plenty of information out there. I think the problem is still just general public apathy. When you have 80% of the registered voters that don't bother to vote, I don't think that there's a great need or interest in the community for getting information.
And I agree with Mr. Winger on this. We're here to represent the citizens of Vero Beach in the best capacity that we can. If indeed the citizens are not getting the information that they need, then we need to make sure that somehow they are. Maybe the newspaper is a good idea. But if something like that were to be done, I think it would be prudent for us to stop having situations such as where we had the skate alliance here and we were making progress and then all of a sudden we need to make the residents around the park aware of what's going on. So if we made a move to get the knowledge to the public, then that kind of thing should have to stop, I would imagine. It would be reasonable to say that it wouldn't be needed.
You know, there's been, and I can't quote the author of it, but there's some research done in the country that says, really, across this country, the public is not that apathetic, whether they're millennials or what they are. The fact is that it's hard for them, in a simple way, to get and understand the news. And, you know, one of the problems we have, and I don't mean to pick on the press, but one of the problems we have is that the country becomes polarized and the press tends to take one position or another. What I'm proposing is that we are sure that the fact, get out there to the press and it's readily available on the webpage, that we do that. I don't think, really, the public is apathetic. I think they really do care. But I think by the time you weigh through one of these, I'll talk about City Council meetings, okay? They're only on one television station, Comcast. You can't get them on AT&amp;T. If you try to get them and livestream them, you get an advertisement unless you pay a fee, and it drives you simply nuts. And you get kicked off the thing three times, you've got to reboot the computer a couple of times to read the darn thing. Sebastian has solved all that. In so many ways, Sebastian seems to be ahead of us. But, you know, it is pretty darn hard. You read our minutes, I mean, you know, they're 15 pages long. I'm telling you, people in the modern world do not have time to weigh through 15 pages to figure out what we have done or what we should have done that we didn't do, as the case may be. So I don't think the public's apathetic. I disagree with you. I think the public of this town and this country is engaged. I think that one way or another they're being excluded from easy access to what really is going on.
Well, I think we've also, the city demonstrates, I think, in many different ways that they're anything but apathetic in that there are so many active groups here, private groups, nonprofits, and other groups that are stepping up and improving Vero on their own without going through the government things. Look at the parks that are being fixed, the events that are going on, the theater, the museum, the all kinds of examples of this community stepping up and making it better on their own. So they're very engaged in the city, but they're doing it pretty much on their own. I think we should be trying to get more factual information out to this group so that they show less reluctance to get involved with the city, that they are, they're showing a lot of involvement in the private affairs of the city through their own units, but not through the city. And I think getting them involved in this thing through some other way of telling them what's going on is important.
No, I think you've got a concurrence with the council that there's probably a messaging issue. I guess the question is, is the mechanics of how you want to solve that issue?
Well, I will put on the next agenda the topic to talk about. It may be that we'll have to go to a workshop to talk about it, quite frankly. And I'll make specific proposals of things I think that can make a difference. I spent a long time in marketing, but this is a facet of marketing that I don't know a great deal about. The people in Sebastian are there to help us, they actually do it. But I think we're going to have to explore it, and it's just like the order of the agenda. Maybe Mrs. Turner is right. Maybe it shouldn't be at the end, but it shouldn't be, as it is now, a carnival. And I'm sorry, but I use the word carnival advisedly. So I think we may have to learn as we go, but I think we are guilty of not getting the information out that needs to be gotten out. I really do. So maybe it takes a workshop, maybe it takes six months of working on it, I don't really know.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's okay. I was going to say, I really object to the characterization of public comment as a carnival. I think it is so important to have that freedom of speech and have everyone be heard, whether it's an opinion, Ms. Winger, that you don't want to hear or you disagree with. I think it's important that we have open public comment.
I agree with open public comment. My term carnival refers to a few people who get abusive to council, who take excess time, who do it for their own purposes. And, you know, it's up to us. It's no different than being a parent with children. Good public comment is a good thing. The more of it we get, I've been a great supporter of the commissions. But there are those, I'll restate it, there are those that descend to the carnival, and that simply has to be fixed.
I'd like to amend my last statement just a little bit. In fact, if the public's not getting the knowledge that they need, then I agree, yes, we should come up with a way for the public to be more informed. However, I also think that if you do not have apathy for the politics of the city and you want to be involved, there are ways to get that information that you might be interested in currently. Just something to consider. All right. We've, are we finished with this issue? We're going to bring it back as an agenda item in possible time?
An agenda item for future steps, and from there, I envision we'll go to further steps beyond that. I mean, I'm not wise enough to know how to do this.
Well, I was saying, you know, 3B is going to probably be a big topic, and I don't have a problem opening up this to the public. I would imagine the public has some goals that they would like to see happen during 2016, so yes, I will open it up to the public. Please come to the microphone and state your name for the record.
Happy New Year to all of you. I'm Susie Feeney from the Heritage Center, but I'm also head of the Steering Committee with Compassion Vero. Compassion Vero was a group that was formed about a year and a half ago because of these exact issues, and that we've worked hard within this last time to be able to help formulate some of the reasons why we feel that things go astray and different templates to be able to help people to address that. So I'm here for Compassion Vero especially today because I was blessed enough to be invited to this Step Up For Vero meeting last Monday. And it was fascinating to hear what people felt. And I have always been a political junkie at heart, and there's many times when I have dabbled with the idea of going into politics. But very clearly within the last 10 or 15 years, you couldn't pay me to do that. And I think part of it is because of the fact that, you know, it's not as simple as walking in these doors. It's what's happened over decades, whether or not it's how political campaigns are run or whatever. But there is a price to pay, and the price that has been paid for a lot of the lack of civil discourse is the lack of, the loss of trust. And when you lose that trust, there isn't any desire to come out and vote. There isn't any desire to be part of the process because you don't believe in it any longer. And the sad part about that is the silent majority takes over. The majority is no longer here because they don't have any faith in what they're doing. And I think being able to take those small, simple steps of being able to say, "In this chamber, this is how we talk. This is what it is." And it's not something that we're asking you to be the police, but it's asking everyone here to be able to acknowledge that we have a standard that we uphold here. And that standard is something that if we don't uphold it, you lose far more than just not having people stand up for what you really want or what you believe in. And I think what we have developed in the last year and a half with Compassion Vero is the opportunity to put on a workshop for all of you that we could sit down and talk about these things. We can show you standards that other communities have adopted, and that I'd like to offer that to the council today. So, thank you.
I'll put that proposal on my agenda item.
Thank you. And I will work on putting the workshop for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Mark Mootcher, 617 Indian Lilac Road. On the subject of public input, I think I heard an admission that the problem, I hope you, let me back up. I've been accused of hogging the microphone, and I hope that you value my opinion. If you don't, you know, please tell me either privately or publicly. I hope I don't hog the microphone. But I think I heard several of you say just today that the problem is one or two people who speak too long about things you don't want to hear. And that may be true, and that may need to be controlled, but it seems to me that because of those one or two instances, you're, in effect, killing flies with a hammer by making everybody else sit here for hours to maybe talk about things that may have already been voted on or handled. Now, I appreciate your openness to open public comment before votes and on specific subjects other than the general public comment. That works real well. Not always in your board and commission meetings, but it works well here, and I do appreciate that. So in summary, I think you're killing flies with a hammer by changing the agenda. Mr. Winger mentioned a couple of times how, you know, Sebastian solved all these problems and what a great job they do, and I guess I'd like to hear more about that because I don't know what that is. I think our problem, the problem he described in watching the streaming video on TV is solved after the fact by the YouTube channel. I think that's great. But the reason the live thing is a problem is because we're so cheap, we've got to get this program for free and put up with the commercials in Spanish and the interruptions and the freezing, and basically depending on other people to give us stuff for free. Now, it might take till budget time to solve that problem, but I would encourage you to fix that. But again, I'm interested in hearing how Sebastian has solved all these problems. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Brief comment, and I agree with a lot that Mr. Mootcher said. Sebastian has not been cheap as we have. Your word, cheap, but I agree with it. The other thing is they have a person working for the city manager whose job is essentially to be sure that everything that happens at City Council gets out there. And that is her job, and that does happen. So that's the answer to your question. In other words, you know, one of the things we've wrestled with in budget sessions, as we've talked about this before, but it's difficult because it should be something that comes from the city manager's office, but there is no one really with time or equipped to do it. So the way they have fixed it is they have somebody that, that's their job, and then now we can say, "Well, do you like the job they do or don't like?" But that's been their solution to it.
And how many people are in their city clerk's office? I mean, we have a city clerk's office of six people. I mean, surely we could have, if that's a function or, you know, an activity that you want done, it could be done with the staff that we have.
Well, you know, the problem with that is it's not the city clerk's function. The actions taken within the city, whether it's reporting, reporting on what's going on in roads and streets are the city manager's problem, not the city clerk's problem. And Sebastian's been pretty clear about that, that it needs to come from the office of the executive, the chief executive running the city, who is the city manager. So there's a structural problem there. We can talk about that, Mrs. Turner.
Are we still talking about streaming? We can make comments any time. We're not real formal today. Okay. Well, I would be interested in seeing if we have any options of making it better. I agree with Mr. Mootcher. It's kind of difficult to watch a live meeting on the net if you don't happen to have Comcast at home, which I don't. And maybe we have some fairly cheap, relatively speaking, I suppose, fairly cheap options, and I think it'd be worth looking into if that's possible.
I have some information. I will get to council on that.
That'd be great, yeah. And to the point of the meetings, and I hope I'm not wrong in saying this, and Mr. Mootcher, this was also something that you mentioned. I think the purpose behind what the mayor had recommended a meeting or two ago was that when we come in here, we have business that we need to take care of and get done. There's some people in the audience from time to time, they're paying lawyers a lot of money to sit here and wait for sometimes what is long public comment. And I don't think it's his or anyone else on the council's intention to quail or to quiet the public speakers. I think the purpose is to get the business done first and then let people speak for the same amount of time that we allow them to speak today. That's what I think the proposal was about, which I could agree with. I had some complaints about that. But, you know, the legislative made some changes a couple of years ago where every time the council takes a vote, we have to open it up for public comment. So what has happened is that we've really expanded the amount of time and opportunities for public comment. You know, the idea of putting just open mic time towards the end of the meeting, and I'm thinking about putting it before the City Council's comments, so that, you know,
city council's comments so that, you know, we ensure that we're all here. You know, I, I think what happens is a lot of times people come up to the mic. And if you're watching TV, and I know I've got a couple of people that have said it to me, it's like, they just turn it off and then they just don't come back again. I'm not trying to be hard on a couple of individuals because I know those couple of individuals, I mean, quite frankly, we work for them. You know, we, they pay our salary and we work for them. And we do need to listen to them. But I think when we got people that are sitting in the audience that are, you know, ringing up the high dollars, we need to be cognitive of that.
Ms. Moss.
Laura Moss, Utilities Commission. I agree with Ms. Feeney. You couldn't pay me to campaign, but I did it anyway for city council, as you know. But it was, some of it was disheartening. Some of the, the doors that I knocked on and the people I spoke with, they actually, it broke my heart to hear it. They actually said, "Well, we don't think it can change. It's not going to change. You know, why are you even bothering?" And I was quite surprised by that. So, I, I think there is, I don't know that I would call that apathy, but I think you're right to try to, to try to address that, to get people more interested and get more information out there. I know, for example, to speak very specifically, and correct me if I'm wrong, these meetings always are noticed, right, in the, in the press. Perhaps what you might consider is when you, since you're paying for that space anyway, to use the space a little differently and to include just a very simple agenda of the meeting, just the broad topic areas that you're going to cover. Because that way, if someone has an interest in that particular topic area, the person will, you know, perhaps attend the meeting. I think you want to encourage more people to attend. And I think that might be one way to do it. I don't know if, if, I have a second suggestion, and you might be doing this already. Do you include the website, the city of, COVB.org website in the newspaper ads always? Is, is it in there, Tammy?
We do not advertise the agenda in the newspaper. We use other means. It's on our website and we public notice it here. The reason was the cost of advertising it. I mean, my budget was extremely high when we were advertising it in the newspaper. And at one time, by law, we had to do that since we don't, we don't advertise in the newspaper anymore.
But, Mrs. Moss, correct me if I'm wrong, you're asking if, if the newspaper directs people to the website? Is that what you're asking?
No, I was asking if you are, like, notice you're already paying for newspaper space. Are you or you're not?
No, we're not. At one time.
Oh, you're not anymore?
We just put a little blurb in there saying that we're going to have a meeting and here's our website address. I'm not doing that anymore. If council would like me to start that again, I'd be glad to.
Okay. Well, that's, that's what I was thinking of. And I'm sorry, didn't know that you were no longer doing that. So, the suggestion had to do with, if you start doing that again, I would put just the general topic areas. You could even run a small space ad, just, and not the whole, not the entire agenda. I know it gets very lengthy and you have ordinances and it's very complex. But just, I'm thinking of two or three, you know, two or three lines. That's it. Were the general topic areas to be discussed. And always put the website in any printed material, anything that goes to the press. Because I think a lot of, you know, I found a lot of people didn't know about it. And I, I know the website was being looked at and being redone, and I think that's a great idea. And by the way, that's another thing to consider. On the face page, the first page you see of the website, you might want to consider each time you're having a meeting, have just, and again, this is just two or three lines. What is the agenda? So, as soon as it comes up, people can see. They don't have to look for it. There's your agenda. And maybe after the meeting, you could have an executive summary of the minutes, and that also could pop up right away. So, people, as Mr. Winger was saying, and correctly, people are looking for information, but they're looking for, to get, to receive it quickly and easily. So, anyway, just suggestions.
Mrs. Moss, adding to what you said, I'll, I'll say what you said about when we do have something printed, I'll say it a different way. We do it in legalese. You know, it's this block of condensed all sorts of stuff. "Please be aware that on such a date, you need to know that such a rule and such a Florida law is being accessed." There are cities within the state that do it a different way.
In English.
They, well, they do it in English. They might use color, but they have a headline and says important, you know, or something. But it's actually put out there in a way. I mean, when I see these things in the paper, whether the, the state, the county, us, anyone else, a, someone like Florida Power and Light asking for a permit, whatever, when you read, no one could possibly, no one would read those things the way they're put out there. And they don't have to be, as long as you cover what needs to be in them, you can do the way you suggest. You're absolutely right.
Yeah. You might want to consider that, just a small budget for small space ads. And it's how you use it. Just use it in a very simple, very simple, very effective way. As I think, you know, people, I, I just hated to hear that, that people were so disheartened and discouraged, "Well, it's not going to change." And I think if they saw more information out there, but as Mr. Winger was saying, in a very simple format, you know, just, just the general issues. And that way, if they have an interest, you know, they'll follow it. They'll either come to the meeting or perhaps, again, you can have an executive summary available on the website, pops up right away, you know, they can check on it, make it easier for people to be involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moss. I was going to say, utilizing the website more effectively, I think certainly is something to look at. And possibly a discussion for another time with council. But, you know, is newspaper advertising, you know, the wisest way to communicate with the public? I mean, newspaper subscriptions are down, you know?
Good point.
People are utilizing it less and less. How is the best way to reach our public? And I think that's just a question I'm throwing out there.
I'm going to, I'm going to suggest as a, as a marketing person, I would see, you know, really focusing on the website. And I know you've already talked about that. I, I was here, it was probably almost a year ago. And there have been changes and, and I think that's, it's all for the good. But you might want to consider a small budget for print to direct people to, to the, when you, when you finish, when you've got the website the way you want it, you might want to consider a small, a small print budget to direct people to the website, you know, for a period of time, you know, as part of a campaign.
Yeah, that overall probably saved money. I think that's a good idea.
Yeah. Just to, just to direct people. And, and radio too, send out, you know, publicity.
And only because Councilwoman Turner has a good point. Quite honestly, I've, I only received the Wednesday and Sunday paper and have for, for years. So, I, I may very well miss something in the paper myself, if that's what I used as my guideline.
Okay. Mr. Day?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, council. Ken Day, 1846 21st Avenue. Like to echo on the TV situation on the streaming. If you can fix that, please fix it right away. That, that would be very important, whatever you need to do. And hopefully you don't take too long on it. Public input, I know public input's very important to you all. It's actually very important to me. I was in the military. Freedom of speech, to me, is extremely important, that our citizens can come up here and speak. I would recommend whatever you do with public input, if it's a three-minute time limit that you have on your agenda and that that has been on there, excuse me, just stick to the rules. It's rules that you folks have put down. Also, if you have a particular item that you need to discuss with the city council, and it's going to take you a little bit longer than three minutes, you have forms that you put together. I think it was either last year, the year before, you had to fill out the form, you put your topic down, and you ask for the appropriate time. I found you as a city council, and even before Mr. Howell was here, if sometimes if you had something on the agenda and you had a, need a little extra minute or so, you, the council has been very generous in the past to allow that. It's your meeting, just control it. Public input is important to all of us. And don't forget, you only meet twice a month. Our city has gotten busier. You're going to have more people coming in. They want to talk to you all. Local government is the closest government to us. City of Vero Beach has always been open to the general public. Sometimes people get a little excited when they come to the mic. And like Mr. Kramer said, Mr. the mayor, you guys, you know, you accept it to pay. I know it's not that much, but you're here to hear from the people. Again, back to your meeting, just control it. You have important business to do. You have things you have to get done. Right now, you can speak on everything on the agenda. We know that. Sometimes people come in, they don't know that. Again, we've gotten busier. You're going to have more people coming in here to talk to you all. Again, it's only twice a month. So, just please, you know, be considerate. If you're going to move public input towards the end, that, that's your call. You know, whatever you do, stick to your own rules. Sometimes people will come up on the public input. Sometimes you allow anywhere from three minutes to eight minutes to, to 20 minutes. That's your call. That's what you allow. Then some people come up and then you say, okay, you know, you need to stop. And those people will stop if they're under the three-minute time, time. It's, I would just recommend be, be consistent. You know, you are generous. You know, if you need people to sit down, just gently let them know to sit down. I usually like to hear from people, even if I'm hearing things to my ears that are uncomfortable. You know, it is what it is. You're, you're there to hear from the people. And the city of Vero Beach has always been open to the general public. So, just, anyway, just wanted to share that with you all.
Yeah. Mr. Day makes a good point. If you want to speak at a county meeting, the typical way of doing that, the formal way of doing that is to sign a sheet before you walk into the meeting. And they collect that sheet and they can see how many people they have speaking and who's going to speak and perhaps even about what. And it's something you would sign in the lobby, which isn't a bad idea. Furthermore, I think you, you either, you either limit the time that people can speak up front or you change the period of time in the agenda on the, on the, in the meeting when they can speak. And I, I don't know that in any case, three minutes is, is enough.
Yeah. I don't, I don't think we really appell to three minutes. It's been kind of a guideline. But, you know, the idea of, of signing in is probably not the best idea. I know, and I'm, I'm not saying that badly of anybody, but a lot of times a discussion starts to go in a certain direction and it just hurts your, your conscious that you've got to speak on.
That's a good point.
And it's, it's really important that, hey, if something's happening and you don't like the way it's going, that you have the opportunity to speak.
Hi, Sue DiNino, 5125 Trade Winds. Just a couple of thoughts. Your electric bill, why can't you send notices in the electric bill that say, you know, "Go look at our website"? This is the kind of stuff you can see there. And the other thing is, I was recently told that on the city channel, there was space available always for nonprofits to run advertisements. Why can't you run the agenda there? Just a thought.
Thank you. Ms. Frye.
Good morning, Phyllis Frye, 270 Date Palm Road. One aspect of communicating with you is to speak with you one-on-one. I know we're talking about the public forum just now, but also I would just like for anyone who's watching today or, and, and to get your input on this as well, to encourage people to come and speak with you one-on-one. I have found this to be just one of the, the most meaningful ways to, to get advice, to say what's the best way to go about something or gain some insight into something we might not get at a public meeting. So, I want to say thank you to all of you for, for opening your doors to us. And I would encourage the public to continue to, to come and sit with you and get to know you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Frye.
Mr. Mayor, just for correction, before we start getting all these calls from the nonprofits, there is no room on our website for every nonprofit to have an ad. That is not a policy of the city. As a matter of fact, we have prohibition against that because once you open it up, it becomes anybody and everybody's.
Yeah, when you have over 300 nonprofits in the community.
And more to come, I'm sure.
Yes.
Any other member of the public would like to talk about goals for 2016? I know the council has got some more goals for 2016. I'd entertain any of that type of discussion at this moment.
I, I've got some goals. And basically, it's, it's trying to sort of continue, excuse me, like, trying to continue what we did last year. And I, I think that's the, we did a five-year plan last year during the budget process.
That's our capital improvement plan, yes.
Yeah. And also, we did it for the expense, income and expense area also.
Right.
Yeah. And I, and I'd like to continue that for this next year. I, I thought that was very useful to see in the future what these increases, these changes allowed us to do and not allow us to do going into the future. And I, I think the whole sort of planning process is something we really need. On another note, having to do with the planning process, I, I'd, I'd like Tammy, on, on the website, on our calendar, to have more than one month. If we could do 12 months, that would be really great. I know there're going to be changes and people are, you know, that's just the way it is. I mean, our, our commissions change because somebody can't be there or something like that. But if we could have the next 12 months on our calendar so people can see ahead what's, what's coming up, and you can make plans to either, so I can make plans anyway, to, to be at commission meetings, to be, to, to, to get involved in the other things that are going on. And I can plan it ahead of time. That would be really great.
Yeah. The only reason that we haven't done that is because all the changes that do happen, this board meeting gets canceled and this or that.
Yeah.
But we can try to keep it as updated as possible.
Even getting a month ahead of this month.
I was going to say, two to three. I was going to say, 12 months may be a bit ambitious, Mr. Old, I think, for the things that are going on. But at least a three-month window, I think, would be reasonable.
Well, I, I think further than that. I mean, I, I just, just making travel plans and things for, for the, the summer or for the spring or something like that, it would be nice to know which, which things you're going to miss and which things you weren't. Or knowing in July when the budget meetings are going to be, things like that, that are, that are big, the big parts of what we should be planning for, would be really nice to have. I agree with Mr. Mr. Old. I really do. I mean, he and I both, he travels a lot more than I do, but we, we both still work to some degree. And it, it, there, there are times that I, it would be helpful to know that the Finance Commission or Utilities, if we had any idea when they were proposing to meet into the future, it would help be helpful. It really would.
I think if we do that, let's just put a disclaimer on that. It is tentative. I don't want to see the public get.
Sure. Yeah.
Show up to a meeting that we already.
They're subject to change or something.
Right.
I mean, we do try, as meetings get canceled, to take them off of the calendar.
Okay. Any other council member have any goals or objectives for 2016?
I certainly would like to see us address OPEB. I know we had a lot of discussions that in, in budget hearings before, chose not to do anything. Got some information on OPEB Trust. I know that our city finance director had done a great deal, and I certainly would like to address that. One thing that's kind of come to mind is we've been looking at the skate park issue, is that I think we really need to break up our recreation projects and look at each of them individually and how we are funding those, the revenue they generate, and also the maintenance, other costs that might be looking at it. So, what I'm suggesting is maybe let's take, take Leisure Square and says what we've been talking about for skate park. Okay. What are our facility costs, maintenance costs, personnel? What revenue are we generating out of that facility? How many city residents are we actually serving in that facility? And I'd like to take that approach and look at all our facilities, whether it's the River House, Community Center, Bethel Creek. I mean, we have all these facilities. Let's take a look at them so that we can maximize the use and the benefit for our community.
Yep. Good idea.
I, I agree, as, as well as perhaps future expenses that we haven't thought about, such as, which may or may not be an issue this year, but such as a new firing range for the City of Vero Beach Police Department, which was something that came up in a letter.
Yeah. It's, it's been on the wish list for a while.
Has it? Okay. So, so I'm the new guy, so.
Yeah, it has. We'll let you catch up with that one.
But as an example, you know, there are other expenses that we may not be considering as well.
Yeah. You know, maintenance issues are things that, I mean, look at each of those, you know, Riverside Park, the, yeah, tennis facility. Let's, if we can ask staff to break those out for us in that manner.
We can do that. And statistically speaking, I don't think we have any activity that greater than 50% of the activity is actually performed by city residents. So, we know that most of our users are going to be folks from outside the city. So, as long as we all understand that. But yes, we can break out the activities. We can, the swimming pool has a cost and revenues generated for that.
Yeah. The tennis facility does, the other things, the rentals and the things.
Yeah. And the tennis is one of those that we went through about three years ago, trying to figure out how we could make that break even and have not been successful there yet.
No, but that's another thing we still need to look at.
What's, what's the new sport that's there at the tennis?
Pickleball.
Pickleball.
But that's in Pocahontas Park. That's not in Riverside.
But, but there's no real revenue from that yet. I mean, it's just a growing activity.
Okay.
And we get a little bit for their use and reserving of the court, but it's not a.
No, but then that group too could be putting up in advance. What I'm trying to do is to get a, a good picture, you know, of our recreation facilities and utilization. And obviously, I'd like to focus first on Leisure Square because I think that information will be vital when we're looking at a business plan for the skate park. You know, I'm hoping the skate park may be the answer to help us make Leisure Square break even, more profitable. But until I have a good picture of what our costs and maintenance and maintenance and things are, I don't know. And I don't think the council can, so I think we could, since that seems to be a, a more pressing, Andrew, if we could start with you.
I agree.
Is there any other goals and objectives that we'd like to look at for 2016?
Yeah, let's try to do it in three days.
With the budget process.
Okay. Yeah, well, I...
Not five.
And another question too, is that I wanted to make sure that we look at our enterprise funds and make sure that the unfunded liabilities are being addressed in the enterprise funds. I have the impression through the years that we take our pension and we just lop it all the way across the board. However, we have enterprise funds that have user fees, that those should, should have a balanced pension fund. And I'd like to take a look at each of those.
And, and they are, that's pretty simple, because we do charge directly to the enterprise funds, all the OPEB costs that we were referring to. So that's pretty simple.
So we have no unfunded pension liability, and trash collection, and electric, and water, and sewer, that's what I wanted to know.
Yeah, and we, we have, as we know, a percentage of unfunded liability in all of those on OPEB, but it, yeah, I can identify what's in recreation, or what's in general fund, I can identify what's in sanitation, I can identify what's in water, what's in electric. So we have, but again, you know, those, as we all know, those are not 100% funded at this point.
No, and I'd like to know what that level are, but those should be close, I don't, I don't want to get to 100% funding. We've discussed that with pensions, but at least get, you know, that 90, you know, get in that 90% range in our enterprise funds would be my, my goal to look at.
And what, you know, some of the policies that we've put into place just recently in the last couple of years, obviously are going to address some of those. For example, going from the defined benefit plan to a defined contribution, which applies to all of our enterprise funds, not the police department, but the enterprise funds. But some of that's going to be given time. We also have the user loser for the vacation, sick time, that we've also put a cap on our exposure there, so we...
No, I know we've taken steps, but I said, it's still an area I'd like to...
Correct. And Cindy's here if you need.
Yep.
There we go, unless you're safe. Thank you, Phyllis.
Some of the ways that we address those unfunded liabilities are governed by Government Accounting Standards Board pronouncements. In other words, we don't have options as to how to report those. On the OPEB, however, within two years, they're going to require that it be split out by funds. And so, rather than wait until it's required, I'm probably going to early implement that, perhaps for this fiscal year, to split the OPEB unfunded liabilities amongst the various enterprise funds. The pension, up to this point in time, the way we've accounted for it is, is a general governmental liability. And again, that's partially because of the accounting requirements. I mean, I can't, I can't necessarily pick and choose how to present an enterprise fund in the CAFR. I have to comply with accounting standards. But the OPEB will be either this year or next year, split out that way, and we'll have another look at the pension to see what we can do.
Yeah, despite how we present it in the CAFR, once again, my theory is we have enterprise funds, these are supposed to be businesses, they're supposed to be self-supporting. We shouldn't be carrying, you know, that pension liability into those funds. Those rates should cover their pensions.
And they cover their payment... They do actually cover their payments to the unfunded pension liability. Those are absolutely split.
Yeah. But, once again, we still have a deficit in those areas, and that's what I want to look at.
Right. We do actually require each fund to pay its share of the unfunded liability toward the, the old pension plan. But whether we can take the remaining unfunded liability, again, there's a new Gatsby pronouncement in the next year or so that is going to change the way we account for pensions, and at that point, it may allow us to take the unfunded liability and actually allocate that to the various balance sheets. If it does, we will. Yeah. Thank you.
But you can still identify the cost, as at the bottom of it.
All right. If there's not any more goals for 2016, we'll move off of B and move towards C, which is the discussion of the future land, where the power plant sits. Is there anybody that'd like to take the lead on this one?
I, I think that, I think there's lots of, of the community that's involved in this. When we look at the, the electric plant, and we looked at sewer and water, and we looked at the postal annex, those areas are understudied by Recreation and the Marine Commission, and lots of people looking at the Chamber of Commerce. And I think this gives us a unique opportunity to look forward and to do something special with those pieces of property. People have said, you know, they're not making waterfront property anymore, and, and this is a special time to look at these things and take our time. We don't have any gun to our head on these issues, and I think it's important that we plan completely what those, the issues surrounding doing something with those sites. And should they all be included? Should only be one of them? Should two of them? Or how, how it should be done? I don't have a preconceived notion of how it should be done, but I think we ought to take time and plan and really make sure that we are doing the right thing with them. We have a one-time opportunity that's really good, and, and so I'm thinking, so I'm saying that let's take our time and really do a good job at, at trying to figure out the best use of those pieces of property.
That I would definitely agree with. I know in the groups that I've worked with, I mean, earlier I tried to, to just to cut off the postal annex land and probably sell that off and, and put that into private hands. However, what had happened was that a lot of the, a lot of the developers and, and the community leaders, when we, they came together, actually decided that, that all three of those pieces should be thought of as one, as one piece. And it was very interesting that even, even a lot of the developers wanted to keep that into, into public hands. That was something that really quite surprised me. But, you know, coming, going forth with a, I guess we're going, I guess we're going to talk about a different visioning plan, but I think going ahead with, with some type of a, a future land use or visioning for that site would be really in order. I had the opportunity to walk that property, and I don't know if, if all the council members have had a chance to really walk the whole perimeter of that property, but when you do, you're going to get a different sense of the enormous size of that, that property and all the different uses that you can do. So I'll be actually looking forward to seeing if we can get this into a, a visioning plan and then open up that property so that a lot of the people that want to see things happen, that can actually walk the property, I think you'll get a different perspective as to what, what would go there, and what can fit.
Are you speaking just to the annex piece of property, to the post office?
Well, the annex is, is pretty easy. I mean, you can just drive in there now. I'm not encouraging that, I don't know if that's, you know, we want to...
We do have a gate.
We do have a gate. I think that was, that was an easy one. But the power plant property especially, you know, the view from the power plant is actually quite unique. The river just has kind of curves away from that, so when you're at the edge of the power plant property, you can see down the River Quataways, you can see up the River Quataways. And the great thing about it is there's no mangroves there. And you could probably make something there that, that really takes advantage of the view. It would be really nice to see that. Plus the, I mean, you could put probably two football fields in there and still use, still have a place for a boat ramp and still have waterfront. I mean, it's, it's really big.
I think those two areas, the, the two power plants together are 37 acres, I think, I think that's the number.
Yeah.
Yeah. And a lot of, a lot of this is going to hinge on what we find is the extent of, or the lack of pollution that's in the soil, I believe.
That's going to be interesting, because it depends on the use. The, the more you go towards residential, the more cleanup you have to do. But the, if you stay towards public use and, and public recreation, the cleanup is not as much.
It's not as extensive.
So I mean, there's, it's, it's kind of one of those things, maybe you can do it over time and, and get around just paying these big, big chunks of money for cleanup up front, but we're going to probably leave it to the experts to kind of give us an idea of what, what the possibilities are.
Craig Dunlap is here, who has been, had a lot of experience with, with projects like this, not just like this, but probably like this, and, and maybe he could spend a few minutes just talking to us about some of the projects he's seen and, and some of the options we may have looking forward. He's been the, the city's financial advisor for a long time and, and knows the properties and, and may have some enlightenment about what we might be looking for going forward.
Thank you, Councilman Old, Craig Dunlap with Dunlap and Associates. As I've said many times, I've had the pleasure of working with the city for 30-plus years on financial issues, specifically bond issues. I've taken a real interest over the last three or four years on public-private partnerships. I have worked with, or had maybe four or five conversations with Councilman Old over the last nine or 10 months, just in general, about opportunities. I've been involved in several of these throughout the state, and I'm merely here to just give you options if you end up going through some, or developing this property for private use, public use, whatever. I just want to share, and I share this with Councilman Old, what the options are for financing those types of projects. A couple of the projects you, that I've been involved in, that you may be familiar with, is the City Place project down in West Palm Beach. That was a project that we started in 1998 under Mayor Nancy Graham, who was the mayor of the city of West Palm Beach at the time. It was about a 77-acre piece of property that was very dilapidated. And we ended up developing a financing plan and privately constructing, not we, but through a private developer, City Place Project. We created a CRA, Community Redevelopment Agency, and then within that Community Redevelopment Agency, a Community Development District. And so it was a fairly creative form of financing back then, and if any of you all have been to Palm Beach County and seen City Place now, it's been a very successful project and transformed really the downtown area of West Palm Beach and generated a lot of revenue, tax increment revenue for the city. Another recent project that I was involved in, again, an aspect of P3, was at Florida International University. They had a, again, some older housing, student housing, at their Biscayne Bay campus. And we went through probably a year-long process of issuing RFPs for developers to privatize and build student housing on that Biscayne Bay campus. You talk about a beautiful piece of property with a tremendous view. It's the Biscayne Bay campus. And we completed that financing maybe nine or 10 months ago to build the new dorm there for the students. The old dorm was sold to the Royal Caribbean Cruise Lines, who happened to want a training facility for their potential, or employees. Another project that we were involved in on a public-private partnership was at Florida Atlantic University called Innovation Village at FAU in Boca Raton, whereby the university built an alumni center, wellness facility, 1,200 beds for student housing, a football stadium, and a lot of different aspects of Innovation Village. That particular project transformed Florida Atlantic University from what was perceived to be a commuter-type university into a more traditional university project and campus. There've been a handful of others that I've been involved in, but this is a, a real interest of mine. And as you go through your deliberations on the best use of these particular three parcels and other parcels of property that the city may own, I'm glad to work with you and share my thoughts. If it turns out to be private development, I'm just glad to share my experiences with you and pros and cons about those particular aspects of development. If there's any questions I can answer, I'm glad to do so. And I, and I make the same offer, I was talking to Jim yesterday, I think it was, about the Dodger Town project. I understand you have an RFP out on that. If I can be of any help as you gather those responses, not exactly sure what you're trying to do there with the Dodger Town property, but if I can be of any help, I'm glad to do that as well.
Craig, on the Dodger Town, what we're doing is, our RFP is for a real estate agent to help us market that property.
Okay.
I, I don't think we, have we done any private partnerships, private-public partnerships? I don't know.
Well, ours have been a little more convoluted. For example, the old diesel plant is somewhat that way. So we, we, and I told Craig this, we have not been very successful. We have not been into anything that has been a major, for example, ports like Lucy's had some issues in some of theirs. We have not gone into that depth of, of things, but we have tried where we retain ownership and put a tenant on there and, and that kind of stuff, and it just, but maybe it's because we didn't structure it properly.
Yeah. I, I think maybe there's, there's a little fear and trepidation about getting into, into private partner, private-public partnerships that we'd have to overcome. I, I think that, I, I'm not, I'm not positive of that, but I think this is a new water for us, and we'd have to, have to really convince everybody this is a great idea, you know?
I think it certainly opens up opportunities.
Yes, indeed.
Things to think about. I obviously have concern about CRAs and their failures and other problems. I'm glad City Place has been a successful one. That's not sure a structure I'd be willing to look at, but, yeah, if it would give us the opportunity to, yeah, to think out of the box, do something really exciting for our community, to come up with a great product, yeah, definitely would explore it.
The, the structures that have had a lot of problems were the Community Development Districts, the CDDs, not necessarily CRAs. Even there are, there are some exceptions to that, but that primarily occurred when the assessed values plummeted in 2008. And the same is true, Councilman Turner, with, with CRAs. You know, when you establish a CRA, you have a assessed value that creates a base, and then you only get the tax increment revenue from the incremental value increase. Many years ago, I was a financial advisor to the city of Fort Lauderdale, where they created a CRA in their beach area. And at the time, there was a parking garage there, and surface parking, and when they created it, this was maybe back in their early 90s or so, the year or so after they created the base rate, the assessed values fell like 20%, and it took them several years just to get back to the assessed value that was created, you know, that was there at the time the CRA was created. So a year or two after they created it, they're 20% underwater. So there are issues with CRAs, but more, more issues with Community Development Districts.
The, the other thing is, is that the partner you get in with these partnerships, you've got to be very, very selective. It can't be one of those local preference or whatever. It, it really has to be a strong partner that is willing to share risk, because it's, these public-private partnerships, a lot of times, there's a shift of risk to the public.
Yeah, when you see that, you're like, I'd say Lucy or other things, or when, when the city leased the old postal, or that postal site on 17th, and then, you know, they let the, the leasing walk from the lease, you know, just say, oh, you know, and leave it, it all falls back to the taxpayers, you know, that we're left holding the bag, so...
Yeah. Yeah, there, there are a lot of deliberations and things to think about.
Yeah. I, you encouraged me to go to one of their conferences, and I went to a conference in Orlando that I was very impressed by, and people got up and talked about the successes in their cities, and, and there were a lot of good examples of these P3 projects that were very successful. So it's interesting listening to. But I think we've got some, some understanding to get over, you know, to, to learn here. Yeah. Mr. Mayor, the, I think, you know, when you, let's not put the cart in front of the horse, to be very cliche. I think the first thing that's got to happen is what you talked about at the very start, which is we've got to figure out what is in the best interests of the citizens of Vero Beach, you know, down the road, 20 years, 30 years from now. And then we can talk about CRAs if that mechanism fits what we think the vision of, what, not we think, but what the public thinks the vision of the place is. In other words, I think what comes first is what should really be there, and that involves professional planning and, and understanding also what the public thinks should be there. So we can, mechanisms we can talk about later. It's also, I, I understand we need a referendum for this, don't we? For what happens at those sites?
Depends on the type of use.
Yeah. But if it's a mixed use, we do, right?
Correct. If it's something that is other than cultural or recreational.
Yeah.
I, I think Mr. Dunlap's list of projects is very accomplished and impressive, and we have to keep in mind that the ones that were referenced herein are in areas that have a... have to keep in mind that the ones that were referenced herein are in areas that have a different population density and demographic. But certainly, it sounds like you could bring a lot of experience and knowledge to the table, so I appreciate your time today.
Yes, sir. Again, as you, I agree with Councilman Winger, you have to first define what is in the best interests of Vero Beach and its citizens for use of that property. But if it turns out to be some type of public-private partnership, or even if you decide to do parks and recreation and keep it in municipal hands, I'm here to help you.
Mr. O'Connor, I mean, currently, our RFP is for a real estate agent?
Yes, sir.
Now, they're going to probably determine the marketability of that piece of property?
Yes, sir. Our goal there is to find someone who has the expertise to market and then see what a marketing plan that they could produce for us.
Okay. Would they also have that responsibility of seeking out possible investors for that property?
Oh, absolutely. Our goal is that they would sell and take us through that process of selling the property, all the way from the marketing to the selling of the property.
You know, perhaps that's something that the council should probably meet with that person, is to see, you know, what the market potential is for that property, so we can kind of get the public involved into shaping that decision.
We'll be making a recommendation to you as to what our recommended agent would be, and then, of course, you have the right to pick whoever you wish. And then you can go whatever, a public process to have input from the community into that partial.
One other thing I'll mention, again, you talk about selling the property, or potentially selling that to a developer. I've been involved in situations where that has occurred, and it, it didn't work out quite well for the municipality, because you lose control. In the case of City Place, in the case of Florida International University and Florida Atlantic, that structure was all ground-leased property, where you maintained title and ownership and then leased the property on a long-term lease basis. And when you do that, you maintain control, you get a ground lease payment from the developer, from the revenues that are generated. And in the case of City Place, they ground leased that to the developer, the 77 acres, and if the developer ever defaults on that, and that was a $300 or $400 million commercial type project, the city assumes the asset. Now, it's not typically, cities get involved in running a shopping center or a mall or a development like that, but on the other hand, it is a great incentive for the developer to not default, because they stand to lose an awful lot if it's a ground lease structure.
And I use the diesel plant as a, let me use a positive. Oakleyna Bank is on city property that's on Aviation Boulevard, and that, again, is a public-private, we retained ownership of the property, the asset reverts to the city, they got a very long-term lease to depreciate their asset over the period of time. But that is a success story of something happening, so I don't want to say that we've totally failed in it, it's just that, you know, we've had occasions on both sides of the bus.
And Mr. O'Connor, not to get too far off the subject, but if the unlikely case that they default, what happens then to that?
It reverts to us. We own the building, the property, the whole bit. And they cannot mortgage the property, because it is a land lease that we have. Now, their asset is the land lease, of course, in this case, it was a bank, but we have other properties at the airport that do the same thing, that build. We try to structure the leases to what the tenant wants to do. But at the end of the day, if they violate the lease, or they move out, or we retain ownership. For example, something that we're doing right now is the brewery that's going in, I don't know if you've been to that building, but it's a gigantic building, they're investing a fortune into that building, and it is a land lease that the city owns the property. We actually own that building, and from the beginning, we own the building. And so if for some reason something happens, we may be in the brewery business. But again, that's a, but now, that's one of the businesses I think we could make some money.
You might know something about that one.
But that's somewhat of a public-private partnership where we both assume risk, but the private is assuming the risk, in my opinion, that is the deserved risk. That is, I'm building the building, I'm going to run my business, and I think we're sustainable here. And I use both of those examples. The unfortunate part in, in the diesel plant, we did not quite have that same type of structure in our lease agreement, so we're, we have issues. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Lieutenant O.
I just wanted to remind you that at 6 o'clock this afternoon, there's a joint Rec Commission, Marine Commission workshop on this topic.
Thank you.
Hello again, Phyllis Frye, 275 Date Palm Road. As a layperson, and I'm so pleased that Mr. Dunlap is here today, because public-private partnerships are something that are probably going to play large in our, our future if we allow it and decide that it is the right thing. And it's impressive what can be done, and certainly what's been done, has been on a grand scale, which may not be quite appropriate for our smaller town, but it could be helpful. And I see the possibility. What I really want to get to the point here is, would you define to the public what a public-private partnership is in 25 words or less? Can you do that for us?
I will attempt to do that.
Okay.
Public-private partnership is when two parties go into a specific project with the defined assumption of risk of both parties in the contract. And so the, for the benefit to the community, i.e. the public, is it becomes a tax-paying, in many cases, there are other examples. For example, we just want a, some type of amenity to our community. But in our case, what we're looking for is a tax-paying and revenue-generating partner. And they create something that is of benefit to the community. But they assume the risk, and I've given you the examples of at least two that we, in my opinion, have shared the risk.
Okay, so just that I'm clear, and maybe others as well. What kind of participation does the taxpayer out-of-pocket, you know, contribute?
The land in both of those cases that we had. Now, in the issue that we're facing at the diesel plant, we're now exposed to, obviously, liability through the court system, because the structure, in our opinion, the structure in the, the contract's very clear, but obviously, that's not assumed by both parties. And, but I think we made the other two examples very clear. The city owns the property, retains the right, and the owner cannot go from a bank to a brothel.
Correct. Right. Anyone else want to expand on that?
Well, I think it's appropriate to say that in a situation where a city has a, let's take, for example, maybe the diesel building. So it's a property they own, and it's not being used. It may be beneficial for the city to go into a public-private relationship in a case like that, but when it's a city government, any kind of government, that's seeking to do business in real estate, business in, even, I know it was just a loose analogy there, loose example, but brewing, you know, anything. My point is anything. It's not, it's not the business of the government to be in, in business.
Yes, correct. Thank you for making that connection, making that clear. So you're all aware, that's good, and we're all informed, and I think that's very important. And you said the cart before the horse, and I think education and clarity and transparency comes first, so thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunlap.
You're welcome. Mr. Degg.
Thank you, Council. Ken Degg, 1846 21st Avenue. For the record, since we're talking about the power plant land, as you all said before, that is in the charter, it is protected, it belongs to the people. And I want to just remind you all, this is Vero. Some things that work in other places may not work here. The ones of us that have been around for quite a while, we know that. Things have been tried here, like they do in other places, especially the larger cities south of here, really don't work here. Power plant land, wastewater treatment land, when that was put into the charter, wasn't that long ago, if you guys go back and take a look at the dates and the charter language, people knew exactly what they were voting on. Always big vote of turnout to protect their land for public use. Public use means this: open to all, no fees. That's what that means. Also, just here recently, not too long ago, we had another charter amendment to protect some more of our public lands. If you take a look at your numbers, that little amendment on the ballot garnished more votes than any individual that was running. It was over 80%. People knew exactly what they were voting on: public land, public space, protected for the people. Whatever you do on this land, whatever you decide as a council, I would ask you to please make it very clear to the people what you're doing. Also, as you're moving forward, I would make this recommendation. If you're going to do your private-public partnerships, do it in phases. First part I think you guys can start taking a look at is opening up some of the space over there when you can legally, open up some of the land on the power plant where public can use it, you know, see how that goes. Also, remember this: you're a waterfront here, you only have what you have. Once it's gone, once it's developed, and you turn it over to the private sector, the private sector is there to get a return on their investment. Usually, it's five years, and most of you up there know that. Are you willing to do that? Are you willing to sell that to your people? You take that space, it's gone. It's gone forever. Now, if you look at it in another way, if you open up the lands to public use, put things over there that the public can use, you know, that's up to you all and the general public, look at how many tourists you can bring into this area. You know, people come to Indian River County for Vero Beach, Vero Beach City, and what we have to offer them, we have a lot. You notice you have some new motels in the area. So going out in the future, do what we're good at. We're good at, at tourists, bringing tourists here. They necessarily don't want to live here, but they want to come here on vacation, because it's reasonably safe. You can get medical care if you need to, you have a very good hospital, and then we're family-oriented. So capitalize on that. I would also, I don't expect you to discuss it now, you know the city of Vero Beach, we generate the most tourist tax, or bed tax, whatever you want to call it. Figure out a way to get use of some of that money, that you could pump it back into your general fund that takes care of your parks. That's something either you as a council can do here in the near future, or you can start looking at it, so other councils that will be here in the future can take a look at that to bring some of those dollars back. I know it's tied up in legalese, but there's always a way to get some of your monies back if you push for it. So anyway, that's my comments on that land. Remember, it belongs to the people at this time.
One statement, Mr. Degg, and I'm sure you didn't mean to say it, you can charge fees on public land.
That's correct.
And I think there's another couple of issues going on here, and that is that, that Vero's built out, and the population's kind of static, and so we're not going to be generating much more in the way of population, much more in the way of, of property taxes. So we've got to look forward in terms of other ways of raising revenue, rather than just increasing taxes every year. So we've got to, we've got to be careful about, about how to use our land going forward. I'm not, I'm not saying we've got to sell it, or we've got to, or we've got to have it only private or anything like that, but we've got to be, we've got to be wise going forward, and that's something that's got to be in this development plan, you know?
If there's no more discussion on this, I do believe that this is going to be an agenda item from a presentation of the last meeting we have, so I'm pretty confident we're going to be voting on something like, I think the recommendation is to the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council to have them do the visioning process.
That's correct. This evening's meeting, which we would encourage the public to come out to, is the, the last of the public meetings to get input from the community as to propose uses of those sites. Then, the first part of February, the, that committee will get together, make recommendations back to the council, hopefully in the second meeting in February. Part of that is to, and I think they both, everybody seems to agree, we needed that professional expertise to help us go through the planning process. As you know, the chamber recommended, the regional planning council, it is anticipated that this committee may recommend the same thing, or at least a professional planning advisor to carry on and have the different types of, of community interaction to get that input, similar to what we did for, or what the cultural council did for their activities. As you know, that was full engagement of the community, not only the stakeholders in the community or in that area being defined, but also city leaders, and so it, it worked very well. Hopefully, we'll follow a similar type of model for these three parcels of land.
Just as a comment, did, when we did the Arts Village, did they get a part of that funding taken care of by a grant?
Yes, sir. One of the things that you have, if you go to the Regional Planning Council, which we happen to be members, he helps you identify grant opportunities to help pay for the study and to help process. I have talked to the executive director down there, and he thinks that there is availability of state and federal money for what we're trying to do, is try to line up a good planning activity, which we also have the 17 and Indian River Boulevard transportation issues. So he has the capability of bringing some of that expertise in and making that part of the overall discussion, and hopefully it offsets some of our costs.
There's also the, there's, we did a visioning plan, I think it was in '04, and then never really sort of followed through on that, partly because of the economic downturn, and, and I'm not sure of the other reasons. But there's, there's thought that, that that visioning plan ought to be updated and, and then implemented, parts of it. And so I think that may not be the same thing, it may be a different thing, but, but that visioning plan had a lot of ideas in it that, that were good, and the whole community really was involved in it, that was a very, that was very well done. And maybe that's a, maybe that's a sidelight to this or, or something else, but I think the visioning plan really has to be looked at also.
Well, if we're, if we're done discussing the power plant plan, do you want to just start in on D and talk about that?
Sure. I just, I, in sort of wandering around, talking to people about the development of this, of the waterfront area, people have said, you know, we've gone through a process, a very thorough process of visioning for Vero Beach, starting in '04, lots of people were involved in it, and it took a lot of meetings and a lot of time. I'm not so sure how many years it took, but a couple of years, I think. And, and a group, I think, out of Kansas City came up with a very good plan that everybody liked, but then nothing was implemented, or very little was implemented of the plan. And it brought some frustration to the community, and I think that that vision plan, we could probably update for not too much money, and that might be a very good thing, as long as we added to that an implementation plan also, so that we actually got it up to date and then, then implemented it. It may very well coincide with, or be hooked into, what we're doing on these three or four pieces of property down at, down on the waterfront with a power plant. So I, I think that's something else to be looked at. It doesn't necessarily need to be the same thing, same time, or the same people, but it needs to be coordinated, and, but there's no gun to our head over it either, so I think it's something we really ought to look at.
Mr. Mayor, Randy, I don't know whether it would be helpful or not, but the preamble to the vision plan, so-called 3-1 vision statement, I've lived by it since I've been here, including my finance time, about six years. And I think we really, some of us, most of us really do follow the vision plan. I'd be willing to read it to you, because I think it's really a rather beautiful statement. Some of the details have fallen, by the way, but I don't think the ethic has.
No, I think we've, we've followed a lot of the spirit of the.
Do you want me to? I mean, I think I could in three or four minutes. Okay. "To what does Vero Beach aspire in the future? In many ways, the community desires to be what it always has been and remains today, but with all the advantages and conveniences of the future. A vision of a place where the best of all Florida is New York, a place that is filled with community pride but not boastful or arrogant. That pride is reflected in well-kept private property and public land. That pride is embodied in the manner in which people treat one another and work together to address problems and issues. That pride embraces a respect for the natural environment and the unique history of the community. A vision of a place that is different from any other place in Florida, a place that is made up of a variety of neighborhoods, a place where you can fall in love with on your first visit and only make it your home, a place where the expectations and standards for quality and excellence." A place where the expectations and standards for quality and excellence are clearly stated in public policies, private actions, and community decisions. A vision in a community that values its location, a community with tree canopies are preserved and enhanced, a community that uses but does not exploit its natural beauty or geographic location, a community that both recreates and respects sensitive environmental issues, a community that does not succumb to trends but establishes its own image based on its vision of the future. This vision statement reflects the broad values and desires of the community, be the best place to live along Florida's Treasure Coast. It recognizes that there are other jewels along the coast, but that Florida, Vero Beach does and should continue to stand out among those jewels by retaining and enhancing its unique qualities and values. Vero Beach will change with time, and will continue to mature as a community and be influenced by outside actions, thus bringing new challenges. But its inherent qualities and values will continue to be prominent as long as citizens work diligently in a proactive manner. Vero Beach needs to be cared for like a precious jewel. Its brilliance will stand out, not because of boastful pride, because of diligent care, respect, and responsible action. Vero Beach will most likely continue to remain the center of government and culture for Indian River County, as well as an important commercial and residential center. But central Florida is engaged in an area of, era of profound change. Growth and democratic shifts are continuing, continually presenting opportunities and problems associated with that change. The vision plan seeks to determine both the cooperative and competitive position of the city within this larger Florida context. I think it's really quite a beautiful statement.
Mr. Degg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Ken Degg, for the record. Just real quick, the Arts Village, that was just talked about a little while ago, a couple of things got mixed together there, and I know the mayor knows the difference. The Arts Village, when we asked the planners to give us a hand, we had to get the council's permission first, and that was completely funded for by private funds when we approached them to come in. I know what you guys are going to be doing is going to be a little bit different, but that was funded privately. We didn't ask for any grants or anything from the city, we just needed your permission. Our vision plan that's being spoke about, it would be good to bring that back out in the open again. I like what Councilman Winger was talking about, our vision. One of the things that the planners found out with going through the Arts Village concept, because they interviewed, first of all, over forty people, which was unique for them, we haven't changed too much from what we would like for Vero and our desire and our feeling of how we feel about our city and what we think about our city. We're pretty consistent. In fact, the planners right now, they have our vision plan, they took a look at that, and they have some other plans that the city has done throughout the years, and there's what we call common threads in these plans. We just haven't changed that much. We want certain things for this community, we like our open space, we like the feeling of not a lot of congestion, and we like where things are going. Of course, things can get better. One of the things about this city being built out, yes, it is built out in lots of ways, but there's, since I'm in this type of business, the renovation business, it's called redevelopment. We also, and retrofitting. It's one of the things that we took a look at in the Arts Village concept, which is the Edgewood neighborhood, is you do things to bring people back in, there's ways to fix properties. People are coming back to our city, and we're giving them reasons to come back, so our population is going up a little bit. Slow but surely, we're getting there, but it is going up. We're doing things to bring people back together, or bring them back in. Also, your vision plan, we've done a lot out of the vision plan, two neighborhood plans, Osceola and Original Town. That's the only two neighborhood plans that came out of the vision plan thus far. Also, if you take a look at some of your development downtown, the Hampton Inn is one of them. They took elements out of the vision plan to do the Hampton Inn there. That's why you see it, the type of landscaping, the way it goes right out into the street, the streetscaping. You notice what they did with one of the roads to the, to the north side of the Hampton Inn. That was ele, things that the vision plan talked about. Also, over on the island side, if you take a look at the Humiston Park area, elements were used out of the vision plan for that piece of property to develop. Also, we have an overlay over there with the Cardinal Drive, and some Cardinal Drive areas, that, some of the things that took place over there. So the vision plan is being used. I think it's a good idea that Councilman Old came up with. You know, bring it back out in the open, let people know that we are using it. Also, you can use it, you know, if you so desire. If you choose to hire some professional planners, come in, make sure, if you use the ones that we used, they already have a copy of it, by the way, so they can take a look at some of the desires that the people have. So again, just some of the things to share with you.
Great. Is there any other comments by council or staff?
Thank you, sir. The one comment that I, and I do appreciate Ken getting up and talking about it, we do use those elements, and if you'll listen to Tim, oftentimes when he's recommending something, he'll talk about it being part of our comprehensive and vision plan. So we are taking those elements and using them, and really in some of the basic decision-making. It's, we have not gone in using Cardinal as an example and spent the amount of money that it takes in order to accommodate that vision, but every time that we meet with the Oceanside Business Association, or the retailers over there, and some of the vested interests, for example, Nancy Cook owns businesses plus property, we talk about Cardinal, and how is it that we can, one of these days, obtain that goal, and it's just a function of identifying where your money would come from.
So any member of the public? Ms. Fry?
Thank you again, Phyllis Frye, and you said the magic word, Jay, money. Clearly, the Economic Council and the Cultural Council and the Treasure Coast Regional Council and the city of Vero Beach are networking closely to coordinate this vision, the redevelopment of Old Downtown, and the visioning overlay has some innovative ideas. I haven't read it word for word, but we are revisiting the Kansas City model once again, which, as you recall, in 2012, when this chamber was packed to historic levels, and there were long lines out into the lobby, not only in this council, but in every council and county commission chamber in three counties, who overwhelmingly decided that they did not want what the regional planning council, the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council, was bringing us. At that time, that was a HUD grant to the tune of $4.2 million. Nice administrative fees for them, bad news for the taxpayer. And I know that this council supports transparency. When the Art Council came to this podium and said that funding would be provided for the project from within their own organization, it sounded great. The next day upstairs with urban planner from outside our area, it's as though we can't plan our own town. I think we've done a sterling job, quite frankly, and I'm very proud of what's been done here historically, and, and, and I stand by that. I just can't say more about it. So upstairs, I was told, oh, yes, grants. Here come the grants. We use grants all the time, there are block grants, challenge grants, tiger grants, DOT grants. Grants can be good, and grants can have extreme strings attached, and you will comply, and you will give up local decision-making. And I think I'm just raising a little caution flag, that's all, because we've seen this before, it's nothing new. And population density requirements will be there, building height changes will be there, sorts of things that might not fit in with what our local vision of, what was your phrase, Mayor Winger? It was, you know, keep Vero Vero, keep Vero Vero, and it's been a good one. And I just want to say that when we start getting into PPPs, when we start getting into these grants, there are strings attached that, and it's, oh, free money, right? There was a former council member when this came up before in 2012 who said, oh, this isn't taxpayer money, these are grants. Right. But the council at that time overwhelmingly voted no, as did, as I say, in three counties, because it did not fit our Treasure Coast local plans for our own communities, and we realized the dangers that were there. So proceed with caution, as I know you will. I know your arms are open to all kinds of new and innovative ideas, and I support that. We have great potential here. And I'll close by saying thank you for listening, thank you for your time, and I look forward to moving forward with you on this project. And I do want others to participate, I think it's very, very important. Thank you.
This is Frye.
Yes.
This, Ms. Powell speaking.
Hi there.
Hi. This reminds me of a story from, I can't remember what town it was in the state of New York, but it has to do with the Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Westchester.
Westchester, thank you.
Astorino.
So, and I guess you can correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, but in essence, what HUD did is they said, look, we've got the grants, we're in control, and we're going to build high-density Section Eight housing where you don't want it in the power, and the city against its will has no control.
That's correct.
And essentially ruined.
You know, I'm glad you brought it up, and I, I attended every Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council for two years. I understand their agenda. You might go to an occasional meeting yourselves, it all sounds really good, and it's sugar-coated, and they start out in tiny little steps, so you'll hardly notice, so beware. We love you folks, so we just want to be protective, I guess, so thank you.
Thank you.
Was there any other comments by the public or the council members?
Mr. Mayor, I was just, you know, thinking, thinking about this, you know, the visioning statement, I don't know, just a kind of an open suggestion. Okay, three days on the budget in July, oh, I hate it. But maybe we should take, maybe we should take a morning, and, you know, there's a visioning book with all the streets, and there's, there's a lot of data, and maybe we should spend a half-day seeing what we've got. I mean, I've read it all, but it's been two years since I read it, and maybe we should take a couple of hours during the budgeting process and just see what it says and revisit it, and see if further action is needed then. I'm not suggesting any action at this point, other than, not everyone may know what it says, or what it, you know, I know what it's talking about, Cardinal, diagonal parking and upgrading Cardinal, it's in the vision plan. I doubt that everybody in the room knows that, though.
Okay.
This, I mean, I think we should go someplace with it, you know.
Well, yeah, I'd hope we'd pick a time other than the budget season to do that, I know the.
Well, I'm open to any suggestion you make. I just don't think we should just let it drop, I think it's more important than that.
We brought this up in the past, as you know, when I was on planning and zoning, and I don't recall what year it was, but we had this overlay that we were trying to push through for Cardinal, and it was not greeted very well with the, the business owners of the area at the time, and maybe things have changed, but it went over like a lead balloon, as I recall.
Certainly, none of the vision plans looked at by staff when they're doing the five-year plan, and they're looking at capital projects, so.
Tim, I think, can address.
Yes, I'm sorry, I can't contain myself. We have been using the vision plan, as I pointed out. In fact, the 2010 Evaluation Appraisal Report, and I'll suggest you might want to read that, we went through a detailed evaluation of the vision plan. There are a lot of great things in the vision plan, there are a lot of things that this city can't do with the resources we have, and other things we can do, and we've been doing that, and I can give you an update on what all that is. But right now, the important thing is, we're working on incorporating the vision plan into the comp plan. The vision plan has no legal status, the comp plan does, and that's what we're trying to do. So I, I mean, you certainly can have all the meetings you want, but this will be coming for you over the next several months, as we're working on getting that in there, because there's great things in that vision plan. Some of it, we have to fine-tune, so it, it has some substance to it, more than just a lot of platitudes.
Platitudes.
You know, which it's great, you know, it's great to read that, but, you know, but trying to apply it in, in the real world is something we're trying to do. So I just wanted to bring that up, that we're diligently working on this, and we're, certainly the staff has been doing so many things that we've implemented that come out of the vision plan, and I can, I could do a little report for you all, at least to get you up to date where we are, because I know there's so many actions in there that it's hard for people to follow, and I, I'll try to prepare that for you, it's just an update, if that's okay.
It'd be great to have just a short update for the public.
I must admit, I need some education on it. I've read, I've read a good portion of the plan, but not read all of it, and not, and I've just heard the frustration that we did this plan and it hasn't been implemented. I, I liked the idea that it has been, I need some education.
Yeah, and, and it really has, in many ways, and some of the things such as neighborhoods, we have to rely on neighborhood commitment. The staff just can't go in there, I don't have the time to go in there, nor the staff, and then force regs or stuff on people, you have to get them work. The, the problem I'm having right now in the comp plan, other than I don't have, I've got at least somebody helping me, is that we're, we don't have a lot of participation going on. I don't like doing that, but we will have workshops at the Plan and Zoning Board, maybe some night meetings to do that. But I think there are a lot of things that you'll be surprised when you look at it that have been done. As I said, and I'm glad you brought up the overlay district, remember, we did a master plan for that district, but it took us five years to finally to, after we argued about two and three stories? So what I always warn people about the vision plan, it was great, but when you got down to the details, not all these people were behind you, and you were, it was just on and on, but we finally got something going, and things are being done, we haven't had any real development down there, but we're, I have had some inquiries, so we may have some redevelopment that would be more in line with what we asked for in the vision plan. So I'm sorry, I didn't mean to take up your time, I just wanted to bring you up to date, I apologize, so.
And I, and I think Tim hit on, just, just that one point of the three and two-story Long Ocean Drive, and the challenges we just went through, I mean, three years ago, since I've been here, and the vision plan had already been theoretically adopted, but interpretation of the vision plan became the challenge, because we had people who attended the same meeting, went through the same processes, had two interpretations of what the meaning was, and fortunately, Tim was able to work with the folks, and we, I think we came to a consensus, but now that's three years old, that consensus two years from now may be a little different.
Yeah, when they, when you start changing the buildings along the.
When you have a developer that comes in.
East side of the, west side of the, yeah.
Yep.
Long Ocean Drive.
And even in our discussions at the OBA and at the Oceanside Retailers Association, you can see that people have different opinions of what the intent was, not necessarily what the written word is.
Jim, if, if Tim would do as he said, and when he brings back the comp plan, tie it into the vision plan, both favorably and unfavorably, is, whatever that is.
I agree, and, and given an update like a white paper or something, I think would be very good, highlights, so you have something to mark.
Yeah, I'll get work on that, because I think it'd be interest, you know, be value to you to look at, criticize it, whatever you want to do. All right. Thanks a lot, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. McGarry.
Thank you. If there's no more comment?
One, one more thing, just to bring you up to date on the Old Diesel Plant, we have a review committee, we have three proposals going in at that site, we will be making those reviews, probably asking for interviews, that has not been decided yet, but more than likely, interviews from the proposals. Then we'll try to get a numerical score and pick one for a recommendation to the city council. Obviously, you will have all that information in front of you. I think we have a couple of good, very good proposals there that could turn it into a private-sector sustainable businesses, so we're really going to work on that.
We're going to let the public know about this?
I think we're in the process of doing that as, as we speak. And I, I think a couple of the newspapers have been very interested in that, so it's gotten a little bit of coverage.
The criteria, obviously, will include the whoever is bringing forth a proposal that they financially can pull it off.
Absolutely. We're looking at two primary things. One is the projected use and the sustainability of that projected use, and the other, obviously, is the bid price. Fortunately, the bid prices are pretty close, and it's hitting around a number that I think is reasonable.
Well, whoever does whatever, it needs to be well-capitalized, you know, so we don't run into that.
Absolutely, and self-capitalized.
Capitalized.
All right, last, last call for comments?
Is this prior to adjournment?
Well, if there's no more comment, I'd be listening for a motion for adjournment.
Well, let me, let me say something real quick, and this may be the wrong forum for this, maybe it should fall under my matters during the regular meeting, but we give a lot of well-deserved recognition to a lot of different groups here in town, and I think that's appropriate, but for, for whatever reason, and maybe because I've served on so many boards for such a long period of time over the years, I think it would be appropriate to give people recognition for volunteering countless hours of their time on various boards and committees here, here in the city, maybe a criteria of five or ten years, or whatever that may be, but I don't think we give those folks enough credit.
And I was going to say, I was a bit embarrassed when we were wrecking.
And I was going to say, I was a bit embarrassed when we were recognizing Carl Zimmerman for 30 years of service in our tree and commission, and we gave him a piece of paper that wasn't even framed or anything else. I think that was, you know, and you know I'm always the one to be watching costs, but I thought that was an embarrassment, and I think we could certainly do better to recognize our volunteers and the commissions.
I do as well. I mean, they really do spend a lot of their own time and put their neck out there, and there's some stressors involved with it for some people, I'm sure, and I think we need to address that and give them the appropriate recognition they deserve.
I would agree.
Attempt to do that.
And with that, I'm finished.
Okay. Do we have a motion for adjournment?
Yeah.
All right, we are adjourned.